Let me turn my volume down here. Is that TV on back there?
No, we only have Comcast feed tonight. That's from Comcast. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, April 28th, 2014. We'd like to start first with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will preview the agenda, and at first I'd just like to say that the Comcast feed is out tonight, so we won't have the video in back unless it comes in before the meeting is over. Comcast subscribers cannot view us from home, but they will be available on demand in the replays once Comcast comes back in. So at 7:00, we're scheduled for the hear the mail. At 7:10, we're going to have public inputs and updates from board members. We have a consent agenda, which has just a couple of small things on there regarding a highway staffing vacancy review. Border Health has a mosquito control project. 7:20, we have time for the board to discuss, if necessary, the deputy chief interview preparation. At 7:30, we have a continued public hearing that we have to open at 7:30 for the Neshoba Valley Two Park extensive recreation special permit. At 8:00, we will be starting an interview with the deputy police chief. At 9:00, or whenever the interview finishes up, we will be going to discuss the police chief transition, and then at 9:15 or thereafter, we will be entering into executive session for non-union contract strategy. With that, Mr. Bergman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. A few things in the mail packet. First is the town meeting report, which was mailed out to all households in Littleton last week. It's also available on the town website. And I want to thank all the departments, and Bonnie especially, for all the work they did in preparing that information, which includes the articles, motions, recommendations, and explanations, and fiscal impact. Also included in the report document is the Finance Committee's report this year to the voters. And the most important instruction is on the front page, which says, "Please bring this with you to the town meeting." So if you mark up your copy at home, bring that one in, and you won't need to mark up a fresh copy when you get to town meeting a week from tonight. Next, we have from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, the annual notification of free cash approval. The number for the general fund is $4.8 million. The Water Enterprise Fund, $264,000. And what's significant in the, I think, in our free cash certification is that it's, in essence, the thumbs up from the Department of Revenue that your books are in good order to be able to have a fund balance that you can draw from for town meeting. Under our policies that we strictly adhere to, we only use a portion of these free cash funds as undesignated fund balance towards spending. So we're not going to spend all of that money or anywhere near it. But I also included in the packet, just so you're aware, Cross-Town Connect, the seven town group that we're a part of for transportation, is holding a meeting tomorrow morning. It's one of our first meetings in getting organized with our fellow communities to address transportation issues, also dealing with a number of meetings for the Monmouth City Regional Transit Authority lately, and also MAPC. Lastly, I'd say that our annual town report for 2013 is now available online. We only make a limited number of copies that we print out, but those will be available at town meeting next Monday night. And I want to particularly thank Jen Givens for all the work that she did in preparing that town meeting report document.
Yay, Jen!
It's a lot of work. It's been vetted. Department hasn't had a chance to find, you know, the, we'll call them imperfections or typos or something, but that we think we've caught everything, and Jen did an awful lot of work on that, so thank you. And that's it.
All right. Thank you for that. For right now, we will go to public input. If there's anything that anybody would like to have add, feel free.
Yeah, Jane Christie, I'm Melvin. I just have a question on one of the agenda items, the deputy chief interview. And I'm wondering if, at the end of that interview, that includes a vote by the board on the candidate?
It could. There is, that's definitely likely, I can say it's quite likely, but it is, yes, it's not definite, but yes.
Okay. And I'm just wondering about kind of the way you do the interview, whether, what kind of formality you have for it? For example, do you have a job description? Do you have a list of qualifications for the person that you're interviewing? And do you have a background check for the person?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Yes, yes, and yes, okay. I just want to state, I really think the process you're going through for getting a new police chief is really flawed. I know this has been stated before, but the fact that you didn't do a search committee is really inappropriate. And I don't know how you can measure the qualifications of one person for a highly-paid and very powerful job in town without measuring him or her against other people. That doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm just wondering why you're doing this tonight, because it seems like we still have a police chief, we have a deputy chief, and we're going to have a new board coming on in a week or two weeks. We're going to have elections, and we'll have a newly constituted board. And it seems to me that since a lot of us do feel the right procedure has not been followed here, why don't you boot it off to the new board that's going to be coming in? Just my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Well, the board takes up issues when they come up. We don't wait and take up issues when there is a, you know, more favorable board, less favorable board, but I mean, this board is just as much empowered as any other board that comes on. It's before us now. This process has been in place since December. It's the decision we made, and this is scheduled for tonight after a long wait, and it's going to, the interview will happen tonight.
Well, the thing, one thing that I do wonder is this, the interview was scheduled some time ago, and then all of a sudden it was canceled, and wasn't any explanation of it. I don't know why it was canceled, but that's why I'm saying, why do we have to do it right now if we could give the responsibility to another board?
Why would we do that? How about, I'll let you turn around and turn back, I just don't know why we would. It's before the board tonight. It's under our watch. It's our right, our responsibility, our process that was started by these members here, and it's on the agenda for tonight. I mean, if you want, again?
No, I've said all I really want to say about it.
Yes, clerk.
I just have a couple of quick things to let the townspeople know absentee ballots are available. They are available from 9:00 to 3:00 every day. You can send something by email, you can mail it in, or we can mail it to you. They're available-
For which election?
The 5/10 election. And they're available till 5:09 at noontime, up until that time. Secondly, to let all the seniors know that if anybody needs a ride for the day of the election, the 5/10 election, contact the Elder and Human Services. They are offering rides. So their number is 978-540-2470. So any seniors that are looking for a ride on Election Day, Elder Services will help them out. Thank you.
Sounds great. And the absentee voting is a very easy process.
Yes.
I took advantage of it because we will not be here for Election Day, but thank you very much, Diane. Anything else? Yes, Vera?
Yeah, Vera Sporth, 546 Newtown Road. I agree with Jane. I feel that it's highly questionable that you are doing this, trying to do this tonight, when, again, February 24th, there was supposed to be an interview, there wasn't. There's been a lot of protests about the process. This is an important position. It's also a case that if you do this tonight and then go into executive session, the town may end up paying a lot more, both to Deputy King, who then will be chief, and to the chief himself. There are all kinds of bad feelings going around about what's happening, and this board is a lame duck board, really. There may be one, well, there's certainly two people who will be different people, and there may be three or more. I think it's disrespectful to the town to do things behind closed doors, as it seems they are being done. And Mr. Carr is laughing, but-
I'm not a lame duck. I'm a sitting selectman.
I'd like to say that too, that I am a sitting selectman. My term is not over until midnight, May 10th.
Yes.
And therefore, we are a duly-elected board, as I said before us. If you're wondering why it may have been delayed from any other time, maybe, well, I will say it's been that we've been doing our homework. Everybody's concerned whether or not we have the right person, or if this person has been vetted, but we have been doing plenty of homework on this. And this is where the board is. We're not, like I said, this is the board. We're elected now. I'm sorry, I think I may have cut you off a little bit with my impatience, so if you have anything else, you can feel free to continue now.
Yes, I do have something else to say, and that is that you say you have done your homework. This is a town. Our taxes are going to be going to pay this police chief. And by the way, I'm very disappointed that you don't have TV on. I know it's broken, but-
Well, when you say "broken" in quotes, I mean, it is broken. It's not an issue for the town. It is a Comcast issue. A ticket was issued today for repair, and it hasn't come through yet. It's not some hoax doing something behind closed doors. Two-thirds of the town still has access to this meeting by TV.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. How does that happen?
Because Verizon is not down, only Comcast is down.
So it doesn't show up on the screen?
Because the town hall subscribes to Comcast, not Verizon.
Well, I hope it is being shown, but the closed doors refers to the process again. I know you didn't want to get into the process, but it's very important that if the townspeople are paying taxes, if salaries go up, if the pensions are good, and the selection of the chief is a very important thing. Chief of Police in this town is a very important and powerful position. So I think that more attention should be paid than the Board of Selectmen has been paying. And as you say, you've done your homework. It's not fair to the townspeople to do your homework and none of us to know about it.
What would you like to know?
I'd like to know everything that you know.
Well, everything except for a few background investigations and some application processes has been done in open hearing. We discussed this in December. Everything has been conducted in open hearing. The interview tonight will be conducted in open hearing.
And what about the background? That's very important.
There's been a background check.
Okay, what about it?
I'm not sure what, we get into personnel issues and things like that. We haven't even seen it.
And any background check is confidential document, but there's no, but there's no one's had it to the board.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is William Vales. I live on 576 Great Road. And it's my understanding that there was a process in place around 2011, and it was voted on in 2013. And what I'm expecting to hear from the four of you gentlemen tonight is a vote, either in favor of Deputy Chief King being made chief or not, based on the merits of his ability. And I'm not looking for political statements or grandstanding about tangential process, because I think the process has been out there for several years, and tonight's the night for the vote. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vales. Yeah, I tend not to speak in definitive style, because I can never predict the future, but we're anticipating a vote tonight, so. Anybody else?
Jen Stack, 40 Buckley Road. I would just like to reinforce the thoughts here that perhaps a board that is incomplete should take the opportunity to postpone this decision until there is a complete sitting board, so that the representative, the representation is as it is intended to be in the town bylaws, and that is with a full, complete sitting board. And there is no reason why this decision could not wait another six or eight weeks until there was a fully-elected and complete board that thus has full representation to make this decision. I see no reason to rush this unless a decision has already been made and this board is simply a formality. I see no reason not to wait until there's a full and complete board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. With that, we can turn it to board member updates. Joe?
A couple of things. I was hoping to be able to saw the TV camera.
Mark told you that it will be visible on, he does have slide four.
So the people here, riding. This has been worked on for a long time, the banners that will be going on telephone poles throughout the town, celebrating a 300th anniversary. Finally, after about a two-week delay in stitching and whatever, they should be going up later this week, early next week. I bring it to everyone's attention, because you can still buy these banners. Families can buy them, businesses can buy them. We have two families already that have bought them in memory of certain people in their family who have passed away, so it's a great way of us to raise money for this big 300th anniversary, and at the same, you know, same time, it's a nice-looking poll. It would be up from April. It was going to be taken down early October, probably November, because we've lost a month trying to get different companies to do it, but hopefully it's on TV and they'll see that. And if I may continue for just one second, I just-
Yes, sir.
I know this is your last phone meeting, although we do meet right before town meeting. I want to thank you for your services. I know you put six years of quality work into the water health before coming here. I think you did an outstanding job. I think it's unfortunate that some people have looked upon you sometimes because you're so firm in what you believe in different subjects that come up. Whatever you thought was right for the town as a whole, you would do, and you would stick right by your guns the entire time. Some people didn't understand that. Some people took viewpoints against you that I thought was very unfortunate. And even talking about firm stans and I wouldn't be on your side, talking about CPC funds, I thought you took a lot of courage to say, "I'll thank the ladies for going here or there." Let's talk about private roads, an example that was quite a topic a couple of years ago. Even to this day, there are people who are still mentioning that, and it was one single issue. It's too bad people can't look at the whole thing. I know recently there was an email that went out, I think, to all private road owners, talking about supporting the candidate, which is fine, and how to vote, which is fine, but at the very end, and it's so disrespectful, knowing that you're leaving office, that this person, can I say it? Actually wrote down, "I started off not liking Ted, but considered this," started off liking Ted, but all considered his being a moron helped us all out. There was no place, no place at all in government that someone who volunteers their time should have something said about them, mostly on the way out. It just doesn't make any sense at all. And I think this gentleman probably knows who he is, should apologize to you. But overall, getting back to the positive side, I've enjoyed it. I know you're going to get back into it when time goes on. I stepped away from public office, my kids were younger, my daughter comes out there now. But I did it for the same reason that you're probably doing, but I just want to thank you for everything you've done.
I appreciate those comments so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, the 14th Annual Football Golf Tournament is this Friday, May 2nd. If you want to get out and golf or support the state champion football team, you can email D. Moniz, M-O-N-I-Z, 1102@ms.com, and you can get details on the tournament this Friday. And I'd like to echo what Mr. Knox also said. It's been a pleasure and an honor serving with you. You know, we were elected together three years ago. When you came to the board, I think that, you know, you brought a whole different demeanor, and, you know, it was good for the town. You know, as Joe said, you know, you stood up for what was right for the town and not right for yourself, and I appreciate that. I'd also like to thank you for your service in the military, you know? I didn't serve in the military. My dad did, my two brothers and my sister did. So thank you for that also, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I think that moving forward, the town, you know, I hope you get back into it, because, you know, I know we've had conversations about you running possibly later on, and to see your girls here tonight is awesome, and to know that you're going to be spending more time with them is even better. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I truly appreciate that, those words. I obviously have some words too. This has been a long road, and it's not that often that somebody has the opportunity like this to actually say a few words. I know I'm not some elder statesman that's been here for 20 years and has a huge record of success in things for the town, but I think that if I've been here for a few years, and that I've been here for six years before, and the other things I do, I do have a right to thank a few people and make a few statements. I've always said that selectmen should be, should run for two terms, and so I do feel a little guilty walking away now, but it is just something that I have to do. It's been nine years, and it's just been, it's been a long road. So I apologize for not taking what I've learned and running again, but I will be back someday. I would like to take a minute. I do want to start on a low note, and I do want to address some critics. And, you know, I know there's difference in politics and in anything, any town, there's always going to be two sides. Everyone's always going to, you're not going to agree with everybody all the time. So it's not, you know, just those simple agreements, agree to disagree and move on is not the people I'm addressing now. I want to address the people now who have sent me the nasty emails, the people who berate me after mass on a Sunday afternoon, and the people who write misleading letters to the editor. And, you know, what I really want to say to you is that I'm sorry that you have so much hate in your heart, and that you need to do these things. There really just is no need to go through all that, and I hope that you will take that energy and turn it into be something more productive for the town, and just, we can all work together and make this town a better place. And just to those people, you just won't have old Ted to kick around anymore. Speaking of the private roads that Joe talked about, I did meet a few people on that that were on the other side, and there are people that, who have become friends and acquaintances. I just want to mention two of them, George Clancy and Jim Barisano, who were very, felt very strongly opposed to me. And since then, we've had some discussions with, I've had some discussions with George Clancy, and it's always been very pleasant, and he's just a great example of people, of good people in Littleton, and what makes Littleton great. And Jim Barisano is, he never said anything bad about me. George Clancy never said anything bad about me, and Jim Barisano was just a great volunteer who is very active in Rotary, and he's always sure to personally welcome me to the breakfast on Thanksgiving morning. And I appreciate those two people for that. I also like to thank some people that are very close to me, and people that I ask for guidance and advice on, and I refer to some of these people sometimes in my cabinet, that if I had a cabinet, they would be on it. And one of them very importantly is Kimberly Herriman, who I met one time while we were on the Page Throw Committee, and she always gives it to me straight and gives me good advice, so I appreciate that. There's others around town, there's friends that I see on the soccer sidelines, I think, that will always listen patiently and give me advice. People like Dana Laurie Schuffrin, Peter Gap, who got me into this whole thing from the beginning, Devla Flom, Jim Tool and Jen Tool are some of my close friends who are very patient with me. I also appreciate a lot of people who are on Facebook, and, you know, sometimes if you have a bad day, or you get a bad email or something, and you post something, and someone just comes up and gives you a couple clicks and says, you know, "We like what you say," and things like that. It's just very nice. There's some people who would do that constantly and just really kind of make things a little bit easier. I just want to recognize Peter and Sarah Donovan, Alicia McDonald, Laura Beltrami, James and Penny McCabe, Paige Taylor, Kelly Hunt, and Sheila Locke, and there's a lot more, but those are some of the ones that come out to me first. I also want to thank staff for everything that they do. It would be very easy to sit here and say that we have the best town hall staff in the world, but I think what's more accurate is that we just have good people who care about Littleton and who really want to do what's right for Littleton. And I'm talking about everybody from the, from everyone who works in this town office, everyone who works at any other police station, highway department, things like that. So I just want to thank the staff, and particularly the financial staff. There's lots to learn coming into this, and Bonnie and Steve and Ann are very patient with me, always very helpful, and answer probably the same question a couple times over and over, but always take the time to explain everything. So Bonnie and Steve and Ann, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I do want to go around the table here, some special people here. I appreciate all the support that I receive from all the selectmen while I've been here. I do have to mention Keith. I have to be careful what I mention about Keith, because there is an open meeting law, and you can't talk about the reputation of people too much, but I do want to say that. I do, even though it's all, even though it's all over, I got to be careful here. Keith, I just want to thank you very much for the, especially for this past year. I think you've come out with a lot of guidance, a lot of advice. That has always been good advice, and I know I have stepped on your toes a couple times. And I know I have stepped on your toes a couple times, and I appreciate your patience, and that, you know, that you're willing to work with me. And I wish you the best of luck, because, you know, as has been said before, you know, you have to train new people every year. So thank you for your, you know, thing. I want to go on to Jim. You know, Jim, we started this together. You were very supportive when I ran. That meant a lot to me, having the support of people like you, who have been in town most of their lives, all their lives, and all their lives. And, you know, same with Joe, just to have that kind of support from people is very special. I think you are a great advocate for seniors, and your consistency on keeping low taxes is a benefit to this town. And so I want to thank you for everything that you do and for all the support that you've given me. So thank you very much. Joe, I think you are the elder statesman of this town. I think you are Mr. Littleton. And I think, you know, I think everything you've done for this town, from everything from coaching and serving here. And I don't think a lot of people understand how far and how much you do for the Littleton 300. And I think that it will be a very big credit to you and to your dedication to this town. When that goes off and everything, everybody gets to enjoy those moments. I do admire your work here. I do ask you many times how you keep so quiet, and I admire that, and I need to try to learn from that. And I'd also like to follow in your footsteps and, like you said, come back again someday. And hopefully I can, if I can continue to serve in the way that you have. Last, I have to, I have to thank my family. This has been a long time. I didn't meet controversy just on the Board of Selectmen. And Laura, you've been with me every time, and you've always told me the truth. And luckily, we agree on most things, and I appreciate that. And I apologize for any times that you got heartache from things that you heard. And I'm just happy that you, that you know what to believe and what not to believe. Reagan and Lily, you don't remember a day that I wasn't on a board? And, you know, I hope that we'll have, I'll have more time at home, and you won't have to ask me every night anymore. Do you want to ask me one more time? What, you always ask me when I come home?
Do you have a meeting?
Right, right. Do I have a meeting? So I won't be having meetings for a while. So to my family, I love you all, and I thank you for your support. And the support goes more than just here, you know? As people know, you're home with the kids every day, every night that I'm here, another meeting. So thank you, I love you all, and appreciate it. Thanks. Thank you for your patience on that. That was a little longer than I expected. With this, we have at 7:20, we have a deputy chief interview preparation. We have a chance to go to that afterwards. Right now, we do have a public hearing that we can, let's open this up and we'll continue it, because I do want to get rid of the, knock off this consent agenda. So I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the Neshova Valley Two Park that was continued from April 14th, 2014. And I'd like to have a motion to continue for, just until we-
Make a motion to continue the hearing for the Neshova Valley Two Park.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll get right back to you, Doug. So can we take care of a couple of things here? We have Board of Health, the mosquito control project support.
It's a routine matter, which even though we, every year have the charge for the mosquito control project added onto our list of assessments that the state gives us, we are nevertheless required to vote to request that they do that to us. And we have the recommendation from the Board of Health to continue with the mosquito control project for central mass. So the motion would be to-
Ready?
Concur.
Oh, sure. Peter, do you have anything to add? Welcome back. Do you have anything to add?
No, not much, other than the fact that we have to look at exactly what they use. And I know that they use the two different sprays. One of them is real, real strong, and it can affect other things. So that's one of the things we're checking into.
But that doesn't affect a vote tonight, right?
No. We'll still plat play it.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chair? Let the Board of Selectmen vote, as recommended by the Board of Health, to express its support for the town of Littleton's continued participation in the central Massachusetts mosquito control project.
Motion remains seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And now we have a staffing vacancy review. I believe this is for a replacement staff, and it is budget neutral. And then there is a seasonal highway labor that is also budget neutral or budgeted?
Yes.
Do you or Jim want to take us through it? Is there anything else to add?
We have had a resignation within the highway department. So we're looking to replace that position with an equipment operator. And as, it's going to take a few months to fill that position. Last meeting, you approved the permission to hire some seasonal workers. So we'd like to hire an additional seasonal worker to help change it through the summer with the workload that he's got. It's, you know, high time for the fields and maintenance and that area. So we're looking to hire an additional seasonal worker, just to get us through the full-time hiring. And we've looked through the budget, it's actually, there's a potential for some savings within the budget, because the new person will be brought in at a lower rate.
All right.
She hasn't written down.
Okay.
All right, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Highway Operations Manager's request under the Staffing Vacancy Review Policy to fill one benefit full-time Equipment/ Equipment One/Labor and one seasonal summer highway labor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's good for now. So I think, thank you, Mr. Duchesne, for your patience. I believe we can move on to the continued public hearing now, which was, we started this hearing on March 10th. And we believe there were a few comments on the, on the plan at that time, and we extended until tonight. Actually, we extended once, and then we had to extend until tonight again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, for the record, Douglas Duchesne. Good evening, gentlemen. You'll recall, at the first hearing, we went through the purpose and intent of the request to modify. Quite frankly, I think the basis was to make sure that we specifically identified the area and the use that applied to the permit. So what was requested of us at the last meeting was to provide a very detailed plan of the site. We identified where the tube runs are, where the lifts are, where the buildings are, the walkways. As you'll see, the plan you have and the plan I'm going to give you is very detailed. We identified areas and locations and square footage of areas. So I think it's very specific and very detailed. And it clearly will allow the board to be able to monitor and understand the operation of the facility. Mr. Ducette did have a chance to take a look at the, at the plan, and he asked that we provide a few more details and a few more legends on the plan. And I brought those with me this evening. They're, for all intents and purposes, identical to the plan you have, just with some additional, you know, square footages and some distances and a few things. So I do have a full set of drawings for you. And I've been working with Town Council and with your town administrator on a draft decision. And we reviewed this, and we're comfortable with it, and we feel it reflects the facts that are presented on the plan. And it does refer to this plan.
Right, and, um- Obviously, yeah, I don't, my review was voluntary to do it, to try and see if there was anything else that wanted to, anything else that should be added, if the intent of clarifying the permit. Obviously, it's not to stop anybody else from reviewing this. So if you guys want to take a couple minutes to look at this, that's fine. I think it's just in my professional life, I just want to take a look at it and talk to a little bit of the other questions I had on that. But it looks, it looked good. So this is just to tighten up the permit and to reissue the permit and amend the permit, make sure that everything is clear. So I can turn it over to the board now, and see if anybody has any questions, or if you want a couple minutes to digest it, or we can, we can take a few minutes. But Alex, you can, you have the floor, you ready?
This, this piece of paper, Keith, that we've got, this reflects the latest-
Yes, it does, yeah. That Attorney Duchesne gave us a draft decision, which I had Town Council review and put in the format of a decision for this board to make as the special permit granting authority. We, the Board doesn't, the Board of Selectmen doesn't act as a, as a special permit granting authority very often. I think the last time the Board did was 1999. So, so we've had that, that form prescribed. It does reflect the, refer to the plan that has been submitted to you today.
I guess I would ask one question. Could you, just for the sake of everybody here and my own bad memory, to review why we're here and doing this now?
Sure. The original permit for this, for the Two Park, which is what we're talking about, the Neshova Valley Two Park, the original permit was issued in 1999. At the time, the Neshova Two Park was, I believe, only the second tubing facility in Massachusetts and in the greater area. And quite frankly, I don't know how much everyone knew about Two Parks, other than the fact that the Board did grant a special permit for recreational use. However, in drafting the permit, it was a little bit, and I'm trying to get the correct word. It didn't, there weren't enough specifics, I don't think, in the decision, because it spoke about tube run area and tube runs and lifts. Yet tubing, as you know, you know, it's, it's a big open hillside, and then each winter, they'll create runs. In fact, when they first opened, they left it as one big area, but found that was a little dangerous. So they started crafting runs, if you would, that the tubes stay in. And so at one point in reviewing the site, associated with some proposed development on the front end of the property, questions were raised by the planning board, I think, at that point, whether or not the operation as it existed was in conformance with and consistent with the permit that had been issued. So we reviewed that permit, we reviewed. And our conclusion was that with respect to intent and overall area usage, the park was operating in accordance with its permits. However, if you read the permit, it talked about a single tube run and a single, you know, two lifts. And it, it didn't describe the, I don't think it described the operation correctly, and therefore it raised questions whether things were consistent. What we've done here is we've documented for you the actual areas and locations of every aspect of the park, so that the Board can, from this point forward, always have a good understanding of what's supposed to be there. And if there's ever a question again of whether what's supposed to be there has been expanded or exceeded, it'd be easy to understand and keep track of.
I just, thanks for being here. As I stated, the last time you were here, I don't think there's a reason for you being here. I think that the size of the park has never changed, the number of lifts has never changed. And if I were to take a lift to the top of the hill, I can't see what difference it makes if I go down lane number B or lane number F. It just doesn't make any difference, because the same number of people going up there. Like, I appreciate the work that you're doing now to clarify all this, but once again, as far as I'm concerned, you didn't have to be here.
I echo those same remarks. It is good, though, to clean up the, you mentioned the permit saying "run." And the plan that was actually approved said "runs." So there's a conflict even with the plan that was originally approved in 1999 and the actual permit. So it's a good housekeeping measure, and now we really have the specifics of the whole operation. I think it's a good plan.
Yeah, it's good that we do this. I appreciate you, and your patience, your client's patience in getting this tied up, and the extra work that you've done to make these, the plan and the permit correlate. So appreciate that. All right. Public hearing? Yeah, anything else? Yeah, okay. Well, now, we can, I'll take public comment on this. This is again for the Neshova Valley Ski Area Two Park Facility, their extensive recreation special permit. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this?
I'm making a motion to close the hearing.
Second. Motion remains, closing the hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote, as a special permit granting authority, under zoning bylaw subsection 173-26, to approve the application of the Neshova, of Neshova Valley Ski Area to amend its extensive recreation special permit granted on August 30th of 1999 for one snow tube run and rope tow. A base large building, parking, lighting, and other amenities to include also additional snow tubing lanes. With no additional lifts, will be added to the facility as shown on the approved site plan prepared by diversified civil engineering dated July 22nd, 1999.
Question, is that referencing the correct plan?
Well, that was the motion we had on Friday, I would say. We, it should refer to the-
Will refer to the plan of land tech dated January 22nd, 2014, last revised April 28th, 2014.
So amended.
So amended.
So we have a motion and amendment. Looking for a second.
Second.
Motion made, amended, and seconded to approve the special permit for the Neshova Valley Ski Area Two Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we want to sign this one right now? This is the unstated one that you gave me earlier.
You want to, yeah, sign the signature page, and we'll add who made the motion, and who seconded. And the second, by the way, was me. Four ayes.
Motion been? I didn't see aye, so I have a-
All right, back bring just two. Yeah, so we've got eight parts.
I can think of the same one, I forgot to thank.
Well, we want to talk about the, yeah, who's going to ask what question.
So I will give, once that starts, I will give the, I'll give some direction if people want to go through and talk about questions, or what do you want to do? What's the preparation looking like?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
We all submitted questions to the town administrator, and he kind of put them in to a, categorized them. So I'd like to suggest, as he put them into these categories, we just go by each category. You know, if everybody votes, instead of having Alex ask his, all his questions, and Joe, this way here, we're getting the entire Board's view on a specific category, whether it be community policing or budgets. You know, at least we can have those segments asked and answered all at the same time, instead of going from budget to community policing. So that's a suggestion that I thought.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I need to take care of a housekeeping matter first.
Okay.
I am going to, I am filing a disclosure in this matter with respect to the selection of the police chief to replace retired Chief John Kelly. A copy of this will be transmitted to the town clerk, and she can have one. I have one for her here, and one for the record. Essentially, it discloses the existence of an event with the police department that I had in the summer of 2013. The matter was not resolved in a method that I felt was appropriate, and that I had retained counsel on the matter. And we are working on the matter towards resolution, which may or may not include litigation actions. The police, it goes on to say that the deputy police chief was not involved in this matter whatsoever, and that I can act in a fair and impartial manner with the deputy chiefs. So I intend to participate in this discussion.
Okay. Back to you. So was your intent just to go around the table and we take them as they come? Or just stay in order, and the people who wrote them ask them?
Yeah, I mean, I want to, I think that, you know, Keith did a pretty good job putting them into these different categories as we submitted. Now, the question is, I think, I'd like to have all mine answered. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the Board feels, so, you know, it's pretty lengthy, but-
What's the total number of questions?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
And, uh, did you-
There's a lot of questions.
You consolidated, right? You consolidated, so some of them were similar, you might have put them together?
I mean, they, those are all the questions that were asked. But I just lumped them together by proximity. Some of them, if you read one after another, they're pretty similar, so you may want to, if there are four questions, there may only be two that, four grouped together- There are four questions, there may only be two that, four grouped together, there may be two of them that are distinct questions to ask.
All right. Okay, so we can, that's fine, we'll take them in order, and then we'll see where it goes. I think that we'll also, you know, before moving on, we'll allow time for follow-ups, questions from board members.
So do you want to do all twenty-two, or you want to come through?
Well, we'll see what happens. I mean, if we're going, you know, going through these, you did see that some of them were very similar, so, you know, let's move along. I mean, it's an open process. I think we can all, you know, approach questions. Someone feels similar, we can skip it or incorporate two of them together.
Sounds good to me.
So...
Plus, when they find out he answered one question.
Do we, seeing that the candidate is here and the time is, you know, we're ready, we want to...
Let's go.
We want to dispense with the formality of waiting until eight o'clock and start now.
Absolutely.
Some things I'd like to, I'd like to wait till after the, after the meeting.
Have some things to...
When we start deliberating.
Oh. Good evening.
Good evening.
Introduce yourself to the record, please. Matthew J. King, Deputy Chief of Police. So as you know, Deputy Chief, we're here to interview you for the Chief of Police position, and I'd like to go over a few ground rules before we get started. This is a selectmen's process, so this will be questions asked by the selectmen. We are conducting this in public as required and to allow the public to hear the proceedings. And I'd like to request that, or I'd like to remind everybody that everybody in this room is subject to the open meeting law. And I'd like to keep this orderly, and I'd like to minimize interruptions that includes applauses and cheering or any other type of interruption. So let's all try to keep this moving along and give the deputy chief the respect of being able to get through this process. So as we were just talking, Deputy Chief, we've had, we have twenty-two questions here, and I just want to confirm that none of these have been provided to you prior to tonight. Thank you. And I can, I would like to open, since there's no one's, no one's name attached to this one, we can kick this off with, you know, we have your resume here. A lot of us have worked with you for several years. I haven't worked as long as others. So I think we could start off with a summarize of your background and experience, why you want to be Chief of the Littleton Police Department, and at the same time, if there's any highlights or lowlights that you'd like to bring out, we'd like to hear from, hear of your experience. Man of the floor.
Thank you very much, first of all. I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. It comes actually on the, almost on my thirty-two, completing thirty-two complete years for the town of Littleton. May 3rd, 1982, I started my employ with this, with this community. I was a twenty-two-year-old, fresh out of college, and came to this town and have made a, you know, made it my home and made it my place where, you know, I want to stay. Quickly, I'll just go over some of my, I've held every rank in the department, from the patrolman all the way up through deputy chief, other than the chief's position. I was a patrolman, detective sergeant, lieutenant, and then deputy chief. I believe those experiences certainly helped me, because I know what every component of the department is, other than administrative assistant, and I certainly have learned a lot about communications over my thirty-two years. I, the town has given me many, many opportunities throughout the years. I recently, a couple of years ago, went down to the University of Louisville, the Southern Police Institute, researching educational opportunities to go to. There were many different ones to look at: Roger Williams, the FBI Academy, Southern Police Institute, Northwestern. The one that became clear, Southern Police Institute's been in operation since 1951, and they call it the chief factory, for nothing less. It, I was hoping, and I did, you have to take an entrance exam to get in to the school, which most of them don't require, and if you score high enough, you get into the masters or the accelerated program, which I was, which I was able to get into. It was the hardest fourteen weeks of education that I've ever been through. You know, I can't tell you the number of papers, the number of research, the research we did in learning about yourself, learning about management styles, learning about how to treat people, budgeting, you know, it covers the gamut. Some say, okay, why didn't you pick the FBI Academy? FBI Academy, great school, I was, many of the people that I went to the Southern Police Institute had been to the FBI Academy and were using for their secondary steps, the Southern Police Institute. I made a choice later in my career, after twenty-nine years, okay, pick one or the other, and I made a choice to go down to the Southern Police Institute for the fourteen weeks. One of the perks, I didn't know at the time, is I can now go to the Kentucky Derby for life, for free, and I got housing for free also, so, being alumni down there in Louisville, so it does have, it does have a perk that way. So with that said, I believe, you know, I want to continue on. I've been in management here since, since 2002, and I want to continue on forward. I've been in second, second in command under John Kelly for twelve years. We've had a partnership and a team. That's not just us as a management team, but also, I believe, throughout the community, throughout the town, with the selectmen, and also with the, with the men and women of the department. And that carries out into, into the community. And I want to continue that, those steps we've taken. Yes, for some of the high points, I would say to you that, you know, Littleton received recognition this year that it was one of the best places in the United States to bring up children, and I believe fully that the police department has something to do with that. Our partnerships with the schools, our partnerships throughout the community. I believe obviously that plays a part in, in any of that. So, and those are things we wish to continue. As you said, you've seen my resume. I have my Bachelor of Science out of Western New England. I have an Associate's degree at the University of Maine. I went to Babson School of Executive Development, and also, obviously, I graduated the Municipal Police Academy, and also many other, you know, different courses in grant writing, internal affairs, investigations, accreditation. You know, high points, you know, it depends, some high points that I've gone over is, you know, I guess professionally, as far as the department itself goes, you know, stopping that gentleman or that man who is coming up from Virginia to victimize one of our, one of our children. You know, you know, when we, when we're able to stop an elder from losing ten or twenty thousand dollars to these scam artists. You know, some of the low points, you know, I've been here thirty-two years, and, you know, I've been to too many young, young lives snuffed out over the years on, you know, and not to get into it, but I can name you every street where every single one of those tragedies occurred throughout the years, and I still remember them to this day. And, you know, it certainly affects you. But, you know, you use it to build on, and you use it to build the department and move forward, so.
Okay, thank you. So we can move ahead now with the first question from Joe.
Deputy, what do you see as the primary mission of our police department, the area of law enforcement and services to the town and its citizens?
Well, obviously, our core mission is to, is to protect the lives and property of the, of the community and the town of Littleton. I mean, that's, that's the core mission of any, any department, but to be responsive to its citizens and to provide the type of policing over all they want. There's always, you see, the core mission is, you know, and the easy part is, if a bad guy comes into town, hopefully we're there to either stop it, solve it, or figure out what happened. But there's the other parts of the core mission of, okay, what is the community want? What, you know, what is the community looking for from its department? Obviously, in this day and age, when I first started, it was all about, for lack of a better term, law and order. You went to something, you solved it however that was, and typically that was through arrest or through something else. You put it in a box and you moved on. That didn't work. It stopped it for the, for the moment. You know, now we, we get involved in getting people the victim services they need, getting the elders the services they need, you know, providing services that, you know, we didn't in the past. You know, when I first started, at least around these in Massachusetts, the school resource officer, you know, wasn't even thought of. You know, we were one of the first towns in the area, especially in a town our size, to have a school resource officer within the schools. And, you know, now what was once seen as a luxury, that's not luxury, that's, that's a must. So, you know, you know, overall policing, responsive policing, obviously, you know, the detectives are following up on criminal activity, and, you know, again, being responsive to your community.
Thank you. Anybody have any follow-up? Just, if you have a follow-up, just speak up. We'll keep moving on. We're not, you know, we're not going to ask for it every time. So we can move on. Next, Jim, yours is, you have to go up next.
Yeah, Deputy, community, community policing is based on relationship building between the police department and individual officers and all the individuals and groups within the community they serve. What is your assessment of the Littleton Police Department's successes and/or failures in this area?
I would say overall, we do a great job of getting out the community. You know, community policing is a buzzword. I believe with Littleton, we've always community policed, long before the buzzword of community policing showed up. I believe the town required it, and I believe the officers that worked here always did it. You know, I know for myself, I always got to know, you know, the different, you know, demographics in the community, the different youth groups, the different elder groups, the different, the business owners, you know, it's, it's, there's many different elements that make up a town, even though it's only a town of ten thousand people. We're, you know, and we are a strange town in a way, because we have a huge transient population. So, you know, we make, we obviously have great partnerships with the schools. We have great partnerships within the, the elder, elder groups, but I don't like to see those grow. We need, you know, and some of it's, you know, gauged on staffing. Staffing levels make it tough, because you do have to keep up with the call volume and try and provide these other services that aren't necessarily your core mission. Your core mission is, is the law enforcement mission. So I guess if, I wouldn't call them failures, but I would like to see us be able to offer more. I would like to see us, you know, the SRO currently is so busy in the high school and middle school, he doesn't really get down into the lower grades. I'd like to see us be able to, at some point, offer an officer who is assigned to the elders and into the lower grades. You know, for lack of a better term, an elder, you know, outreach officer and a, and a, you know, a school resource officer for the, for the lower grades. And also too, you know, you know, the more the officers, you know, I encourage them to get out of the cars, meet the business owners. It certainly is easier to talk to somebody if you've had a general conversation in the past. That's why we do the open houses. That's why we do the senior luncheons and dinners. That's why we go to Rotary. We go to these different programs to get us, ourselves known in the community, because, you know, we can't operate in a vacuum. You know, and the only way we can help the community is to know what the community wants and wants and needs are, and, you know, we have to continue that.
Thank you. Just one follow-up, just one specific that you mentioned was National Night Out. Can you tell us what that was? I mean, that seemed to be a great event, and I didn't know, it was discontinued, or was every other year, and it hasn't been had a couple of years? Any plans or any thoughts on that?
National Night Out was a night, it was in the middle of summer, and unfortunately for the, you know, to be quite honest with you, for the amount of money spent on it, it just, it didn't really have a great return. The first year was really good, and the second year's return, second and third year's return just didn't, didn't make it at that time. Which certainly something, we're always reevaluating programs and, and looking at different, different things. You know, and I don't, you know, say that everything's based on money, because it certainly isn't. But, you know, again, when you're, you know, when you're bringing everybody in to, bring down to a program, it's kind of tough to justify if, you know, the, the second and third year, the crowds were just, were minimal.
Thank you.
Yeah, the two for.
Yeah, back to back. You ready?
Yep.
Okay.
You have developed and presented the Littleton Police Department budget to town through the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee for the last few years. When constructing the department's budget, what's your primary focus and goal, and/or goal?
Well, it's a very primary focus is, depending on what, you know, the, the board sets is, is our, you know, they give us, you know, you give us marching orders, and we try to figure out how to stay within those, within those numbers. If you tell me I have to make a one percent cut, I have to look at what the one percent cut does to us. If it's a two percent raise or a three percent raise, we have to see, you know, what we can fit in, you know, in... My primary focus, obviously, is to keep the personnel on the street, because that's what, you know, you know, that's what the most important part of our, you know, our, our department is, is personnel. Our budget is basically, you know, ninety-five percent spent, ninety-five percent spent on personnel. So obviously, I'm trying to, you know, keep the personnel we have, and, you know, to be quite honest, you know, we need more. And, you know, and I realize it's difficult times, and everyone needs a piece of that pie. So it's, you know, it's working through it. It's looking at where you can save money, where you can get more money for the dollar, you know, whether it be out of, you know, regionalization, whether it be, you know, you know, eliminating a program and moving a new program in that is more cost efficient. So, you know, it's, it's kind of that, that juggling of all the, all the balls to get it, you know, in line, you know, and, and obviously, you know, we're, we're basically under control of, you know, what, what we're told, you know, the numbers we can have are.
I know, it's not fun.
Oh, no, but, you know, it comes with the territory. That's the job.
There's difficult decisions that have to be made. Thank you.
Joe?
I was just thinking, I'm looking at the answers that Deputy just gave, and it's, my question is basically, it's the exact same thing, how do you balance the two things? I think he begins with, with it been my question, so.
Okay.
I'll pass on it. Sorry about that.
Although, we're similar, I was, I think we're similar here, because I'm up next with one. It says, "The LPD budget has been generally level funded for the last several years. Simple economics are not going to allow this to continue." Can you tell us maybe some of the plans that you have to, you know, to, that you're looking, maybe looking ahead? Anything you are going to do to deal with this inevitability?
Well, obviously, it's, you know, again, you're absolutely right. It's been difficult, you know. This year, we do have an opportunity, because of all the, the changes in staff that we've had, to possibly add back some staffing levels under our current budget that we do it. Now, I realize that I still have to, you know, convince the, it may be available in, in the department's budget, but I have to make sure it's available over in, you know, there's always the other side that I don't budget for, which is, you know, benefits. So I have to see, you know, there's obviously that juggling act. You know, right now, you know, with the point coming online and Fifteen Great Road, our evening shift, you know, even, even without the point, you know, I need to augment, I'm trying to augment that shift. We're trying to look at some scheduling changes, some other things to make it better. You know, it's difficult, Ted, unless, unless all of a sudden Littleton gets, the Taj Mahal built somewhere that's giving us twenty million dollars in tax dollars, you know, it's, it's very difficult. You know, there's no, unfortunately, I have no, I have no, you know, exact where I can grab that, you know, that pot of money, and it's difficult for all, just like, you know, I know it was a big, a big decision when, you know, you made a decision to staff the fire department around the clock. And it's the same for us, you know, but if I can chip away at it and keep it, you know, under the current budget that we have, I believe it, you know, it allows, allows us to move forward.
All right. This is a, this is a very personal question for me. It's just something that's stuck in my craw for a few years now. Littleton survived for nearly three hundred years without a motorcycle, and I just want to know, you know, how we are more ready and more safer with a motorcycle. And, you know, my part of the problem is, this is a vehicle that can probably only be used approximately six months out of the year, can only be used, you know, two shifts per day, and, you know, how do you, how, how, how does a department justify spending that money on such a non-critical item when there's other departments that are considering cuts or didn't get their mission budgets? And if you want to tell, I know it's not a big thing, it's a big issue for me, but if you wanted to tell us how much it costs first and put that in perspective, that would be helpful.
Sure. The lease typically is between thirty-five hundred dollars and thirty-nine hundred dollars a year for a police motorcycle. We've had the motorcycle actually since 1996, and there was a bike motorcycle here actually in the sixties. But obviously, for our time, for our timeline, it's been here since 1996 roughly. Only, the police motorcycle typically has never come out of a capital item or the department's budget. It's either been paid for out of community policing funds that were provided to us by the state or federal government, or it's come out of community donations. It's, it's never been, it's never been a capital item, to my knowledge, and that's the way it continues to this day. It's funded through the community. It's a great community policing tool. You're right, it's typically only used on the day shift and evening shift. However, it does, in the neighborhoods, you know, when the officers are riding, I find the, the people approach them better. I find it's a great traffic tool, especially on some of our, our smaller streets. Right now, we've been, we've been targeting certain streets that we've been asked to by the residents, and the motorcycle's been perfect for those areas, because there's really no place to put a car, and the motorcycle is, is a perfect tool to utilize that. You know, so I guess I would say to you, you know, you're absolutely right, it's an expense, expense, and, you know, it's an expense I have to evaluate every year and see, you know, whether it's worth it. So far, I would, I would honestly say to you, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, I think it, I think it enhances the community. I think it enhances us through, through traffic enforcement, and I think it's a great community policing tool. I think at Thursdays when it's down there and you see all the, the young children and things climbing on it and taking photos on it, you know, granted, they're climbing in the cruisers and fire trucks and everything else also, but they, they really do have an affinity for that motorcycle. So I guess, you know, right now, it hasn't, you know, I don't believe it's cost anybody anything because we've been able to fund it, you know, through outside sources that haven't taken away from capital.
Thank you.
Follow-up on that one?
Sure thing.
Pass the training on that? What, what do the officers have to go through and, and how do you handle that?
It's typically a two-week training that's provided by NEMLEC, and normally, we, you know, for that period of time, the officer comes off a, you know, one of the heavy shifts. You know, we haven't done anybody after training in a year because basically for the last year with Patrolman Fien being in Afghanistan and because of retirements, just personnel leaving, we've really been two people short since last July. So, you know, currently, we have Patrolman Corry, Patrolman Fien, who will be back to work June 1st, Patrolman O'Donoghue, and Sergeant Panard are all trained on the motorcycle. So.
Thank you.
Just one, quite a clarification, law enforcement and their acronyms. NEMLEC, can you let everybody know?
Sorry. Northeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. It's the law enforcement council that we belong to that provides all the extra police personnel. You know, it, it's a, it's a $200, $500 expense that we pay to every year. We provide 10% of our workforce to, to go into the council, whether it be on the rapid response team, the motorcycle unit, they have drug, they have drug investigators, they'll come up to assist us with just about everything other than a homicide because that's the district attorney's office and the state police venue.
Thank you.
Great. Input, so we need the motorcycle, lead, lead trim break.
Whatever you say, Mr. Littleton.
I have the next one. Maybe you answered part of this when you first opened up too, so it's a little bit repetitive. In the 32 years you have served the town and our police department, you have held just about every position in the department except the administrative assistant. How has this experience prepared you for the position of Chief of Police, and was there a position during that tenure that was most important in this preparation?
I would say, you know, because I've held every position, I know intricately what's required of them. So I believe obviously as a leader, it's very easy to look and see who, you know, whether the positions are being done right and have a basis of knowledge on, you know, what's going on in each of those positions. Believe it or not, I would say to you that the, being a patrol officer probably at first best prepares you because it gets you to, it gets you to know the community and to, you know, to get the feel for the community. Littleton obviously has changed over the 32 years I have been here. It was a, was a blue collar town, you know, much more blue collar town when I started. You know, and it's also been kind of an anomaly, it's a different kind of community because we are such a transient, we have such a transient population that moves through us. We have four major exits off the highways, which towns five, six, seven times our size, you know, do not have, and are common, you know, everyone, you know, it's like the wagon wheel, I call it, everything dumps through Littleton, you know, from Townsend, Pepperell, Air, Shirley. If you want to get to Boston, you're coming through the town of Littleton in some fashion. And obviously, you know, whether they're part of our community on a permanent basis or a transient part of the community, you know, you get to know that as a, as a patrolman. Obviously, all the other ranks, you know, certainly help. I would say to you, you know, where I've learned the most management-wise, obviously, is my time as a second commander of the department. In form of the partnerships, you know, that we've had, you know, that the chief and I have had, and, you know, that I've been allowed to, you know, expand through educational opportunities, and also just the opportunities that I was allowed to, you know, do budgeting, do, you know, do the nuts and bolts of the department before, you know, hopefully just getting it dumped in my lap and not having a clue of what I'm supposed to do. And I believe, you know, but I believe it's a whole process, Mr. Mox, I don't believe it's just any one thing that gives you, you know, gives you it all.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes? So you say that as a patrolman, that's where you've got your most experience. At what point in there did you decide you wanted to come all the way to the top to be chief?
That's a good question. When you start, when you start to move up through the ranks, you know, I always knew I wanted to be a sergeant, I always knew I wanted to, to do, you know, that part. And then, you know, once I, I became a sergeant, became a line supervisor, I, you know, saw that you had some more control and some more input as to the path the department was traveling in, and I realized, well, I felt I was actually pretty good at my job, to be quite honest with you, it'd be, I guess, a little, you know. So as I moved forward, the position of lieutenant opened up, and I obviously participated, was selected as a lieutenant, and was second in command for a number of years. So I'm not sure, you know, when, you know, I mean, even when I was a lieutenant, I, I probably wasn't 100% sure because sometimes being second in command is, is one of the best jobs in the world. You still get that one insulator on top and everybody still reports to you. So I guess I only get one person shooting at me rather than, so.
You're about to tell us by experience.
I had the next question, and it was similar to something you've already answered, so I'm going to change it up a little bit. I haven't been working with you for the last 32 years, so tell me one thing I don't know about your career.
One thing you don't know about my career?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess it depends on what you want, you want it on.
Anything, a highlight, just want, I want to know something I don't know about Deputy Chief King.
You probably don't know, I was in a shooting back in the early 80s in Littleton, that from a, from a breaking and entering where the gentleman tried to assault and kill my partner and I. You probably didn't know that about me. You know, and that gave me a different, you know, respect for and, you know, what officers, you know, on their daily lives go through. And, you know, we're a small community, you know, and then, you know, Town of Shirley, two towns away, half our size, sent two police officers shot. So, you know, it doesn't matter where you are, you always have to do your job, you know, you always have to keep on, you know, on your guard and, and, you know, keep the training. And that's one reason, you know, I believe throughout this last year, we've talked a lot about training. You know, we've trained in, you know, obviously, active shooters have been in the schools. We constantly train, you know, our officers with firearms and, you know, not to just concentrate on that, but that's just, that's just one thing you probably didn't know that, you know, adds a different facet to, you know, my experience.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, looks like a different subject matter here, so we'll go to Joe.
You've been in, I've been in charge for a number of years. How would you describe your management style right now, and how will it change when you become chief?
I would say that inclusive would probably be my management style, if you will. But with that said, you know, inclusive, autocratic, democratic, you know, whatever way you want to say, in the end, the buck stops with, with me. You know, if I take an idea that I think is great from one of my subordinates and bring it forward and it blows up, well, it's not my subordinate's fault, that's my fault. So, you know, I believe that, you know, just because you're the head of anything doesn't mean you necessarily have the biggest brain all the time, and you have to listen to your subordinates, you have to listen to suggestions, you have to take these suggestions where appropriate. There are other times when you're at a, at a scene and it's a, it's a working scene where, you know, there may not be time for a lot of suggestions. It's, you do this, you do this, you do this, you do this, go do it. There's no, there's no questions, there's no, you know, and, and that's the way it has to be done. But I would say my typical management style would be, would be, you know, inclusive and, you know, until it's time to be autocratic or, or, you know, or something else. Obviously, in policing, there's the general management as the chief of police, and unfortunately, that could change at a minute's notice depending on what you're doing all of a sudden. And you're running a scene, you're running an investigation, you're, you're dealing with, you know, a tragedy within the community, you know, and then you have to figure out. But, you know, in the end, I'm the guy at the top.
The next two questions are very similar, one of them's mine, one's Alex's, so I'll defer to Alex if you'd like to go ahead with the next couple of questions.
I'm just looking forward to it being the other way.
No.
I'll do it. Often when somebody is newly in charge, they want to make changes. What changes do you want to make in the Littleton Police Department immediately upon becoming chief?
Well, to be honest with you, I don't know if there's any, you know, crazy immediate changes I wish to make. Obviously, I believe because of the type of setting that I've been in for the last 12 years, a lot of my, a lot of ideas and a lot of my ideas and a lot of other things have been already put into place. Some things we, you know, I am looking, I am currently looking at is coming right back at the, the board after Tom Eaton and trying to get that 17th officer on before the summertime to get the 3 to 11 shift augmented with some more personnel. I'd like to, you know, we're going to sit down with the members of the department, look at some, possibly some, look at different scheduled times and things of that nature to maybe better serve our call centers and also our, our call volumes. That, you know, 2 o'clock to 6 o'clock time, you know, I like to try and get some, some extra, you know, coverage, and that could be done through some, some, you know, some scheduling changes. You know, and looking at and coming back obviously with budget suggestions, you know, and I think those are the, those are my big changes right now. Obviously, you know, I don't plan on doing anything if, if you select me for this position with my position probably until next, late next fall, early December, and, but that'll, that'll be something for a later date.
Okay, nice one. Yes, sure.
Okay, this is somewhat along similar lines, but a little longer view, a little further out. What are the most significant challenges you feel the department will face, and how will the department have to adjust to face these challenges? What should we have a heads up about?
Obviously, I think the, the point is going to draw more traffic through our community. And obviously, one of the number one complaints we all hear is about traffic on our, on our streets, so I believe that obviously is going to be a challenge. I don't think it's necessarily a bad challenge, I think the point will be, will be great for this community. However, you know, it is something, it is, it is a point we'll have to, lack of a better term, an area where we're going to have to add extra, have extra eyes on. I believe, you know, housing, we're adding more housing, we're adding 15 Great Road, you know, compact centers like that add, you know, three to four, you know, 500 calls a year in those kind of centers. So, you know, personnel, you know, really is our, I think our biggest changes that we have to look for and, and also building, you know, continue building the department, the department rank structure moving forward because, you know, no matter, no matter what, you know, the maximum I can stay is, is 10 more years, no matter what, just by, by law. So we have to, we have to continue to build that throughout the department and move forward.
Thank you. So moved on from that, and we'll move on to a little more about some operations here. It says, just curious about whether the current promotion process is within the department. What role have you played in previous internal promotions? What role do you see yourself playing should you become chief?
Well, you know, I've always been involved in the promotional process even back when I was a sergeant. We were always under Tom O'Day, even before Chief Kelly. Chief O'Day utilized several of us during promotional processes, and I continued that throughout my career. As chief, I believe, I believe, you know, obviously, you have to have input within those processes, but I believe your input comes in near the end, once you have gone through, you know, and it would depend on the position, like for sergeants, detectives, there's all sorts of, you know, the detective is a much more, you know, you've got to look at the person. Not everyone who's a great patrolman will make a great detective. Not everyone who's a great patrolman will make a great sergeant. You know, you just have to, you know, and you have to be able to, to weed that, those sections out. Obviously, I believe my input would be greatly needed within the processes, but my thoughts at this point would be to, because of accreditation and things of that nature, we have to set up processes for each position. Right now, they've been kind of fluid throughout the, throughout the years, but I would see us setting up more structured processes to some degree, and I, and I don't mean that in any kind of a bad way, I think the, and it may be exactly what we do now, but get them locked down and writing so everyone knows, you know, year in and year out what we're, what we're doing.
Okay. Alex, I think you're up next.
What are your thoughts about workforce development and training, training up for succession within the department? How will you address the promotional processes that will be needed to fill command and administrative vacancies? What are your thoughts on the position of deputy chief?
That's a lot in one question, I understand.
Well, obviously, you know, you know, I'm a believer in education, and I believe, or I know for a fact that it's actually in the deputy chief's job description now to have to have some sort of a secondary training, whether it be Northwestern, FBI Academy, SPI, something of that nature. They don't have, you know, that's, that's actually right in the job description. I believe it says that after two years after they're appointed, they must go to that school. That being said, we also send our people to, you know, every educational opportunity that we can afford and that we can, you know, send our personnel to, to develop. Patrolmen, you know, we want to get them to the, to the different management schools or, you know, or, you know, lower level management schools to give them the tools that will help them progress forward throughout the department. You know, everyone on the department has to be replaceable at some point. No one is going to be there forever, no one's going to stay there forever. So the, the person below you has to be able to step up and take over, you know, your position if, if needed, whether that be a patrolman, whether it be a sergeant, deputy chief, you know, there has to be, and it's incumbent on, you know, me as the, the manager to ensure that those people are getting the education they need. You know, obviously with, you know, there has to be some buy-in from the personnel also. The position of deputy chief, I feel personally, obviously because I hold the position, it's a, it's a key position within the department. Some people say, well, what's the difference between deputy chief and lieutenant? Well, I basically did the same job when I was a lieutenant as deputy chief, but deputy chief in a department our size and how we work really denotes what the job is. It's truly the second commander of the department, it's truly the person who, when the chief is absent or the chief is not there, is going to be the person that the town reaches out to and takes over and runs that position. I fully believe that it is the right thing to do. And since, since we have done it, several other communities, Townsend, I believe Pepperell is going to with deputy chief's position, and not to say that, you know, they're emulating us, but to some degree they are because they're calling over and talking to us as to, you know, why we did it and how we did it. And, you know, I believe it better represents you throughout the law enforcement community. There is a different, you know, denotion out there between a lieutenant and a deputy chief throughout the law enforcement community when you're dealing with outside entities coming into your community, whether it be federal agencies, state agencies, other local agencies, certainly it, it just denotes a different, a different style, and I believe it's a great management tool to utilize.
Thank you. We've covered this a little bit, but if we can talk, if you can talk a little bit more about the current education requirements for each level for officers, sergeants, detectives, and, you know, would there, should you be appointed chief, are there any changes that you would make to improve the readiness of the department?
Well, right now, in the, the job description covers the basics. To get on as a patrolman, you have to have a minimum of a high school diploma, you have to have, and that's really, you know, your, your minimum there. You know, we like to have some college courses if possible, military experience, things of that nature are great because obviously, we're a paramilitary organization. Sergeant requires a, an associate's degree at this point, and the same with basically up through the position of, of chief of police, it's with an associate's degree by job description. Now, with that said, we're continually, you know, encouraging our officers to go back to school. Several of them have completed either first degrees or in the middle of working at their, at their first degree still. You know, one of our officers, I believe, is very close, or I know he is, he's very close to finishing his bachelor's degree, and we encourage them and we, you know, we try and assist any way we can. Also too, providing the education we can through the department, again. You know, there's different management courses, there's different, you know, courses that we're sending the officers to all the time that are not meant to, that what's good for Littleton and good for our officers, you know. So, anything we're, we're doing or looking at or designing is meant to enhance our officers throughout our department and, and that's, you know, that's what makes us, I believe, you know, the organization we are.
Okay. What are some of those other training programs that you may send them out, interdepartment or, you know, not college that you just mentioned?
Well, Mass Police Institute, you know, whether it be, you know, there's a lot of school, you know, you can go from anything from photography to fingerprinting to internal affairs to supervision to, you know, pretty much any, any gamut of the law enforcement, you know, there's obviously the motorcycle school, there's, you know, there's the constant schools that we utilize, obviously, which are, you know, firearms, we do three times a year. Every other year, we send our people to pursuit driving because, you know, obviously that's, you know, high speed driving is something that, you know, it's A to protect the officers, you know, and hopefully they can, they can get out of a situation if they get into it. You know, there's the core things that I believe, you know, that we do, whether it be, you know, the CPR, the first responder, the, you know, defensive tactics, those things which are mandated by law, the 40 hours that we have to do to keep our certifications, your CPR, your, you know, those things are all mandated by law, which, you know, we do in-house now because it's A saves money and B we know it's, it's getting done. Then there's the outside courses and again, that's, that's available on time and money and, you know, obviously, you know, it'd be great if I could send somebody out to schools every week, but I obviously can't strip a shift, you know, and we don't have the money unlimited overtime fund, so, you know, we have to pick and choose and what we try and do is spread it around, you know, and pick on, you know, for some, for some officers it's pick on their strengths and for some officers it's to help them with weaknesses and fill in blanks for them.
Okay. And what about the requirements? You were talking about high school for patrol, things like that, is there, and I'm sure when you get the applications, you shoot for people higher than that, but is there any thoughts? Do you have any plans or are you going to consider changing those maybe to improve readiness or is there a need to increase any requirements for each position?
Um, you know, so far I haven't, I haven't seen that, you know. Some of our best officers, you know, have master's degrees and some of our best officers have a high school diploma, you know, it, you know, it depends a lot on the person, you know. Obviously, I believe in higher education, I, I think, you know, but, you know, we encourage it. Right now, I don't anticipate making any changes. Obviously, it would be something that we'd have to sit down with the personnel committee and the board, obviously, to make any changes because these, those job descriptions are actually job descriptions held by the town of Littleton, not by the Littleton Police Department. So, you know, I, I think, I think as, as the profession of law enforcement grows, Mr. Chairman, you will see changes, I think, mandated.
The next one is mine also regarding the SPI, but you were going to answer that in your opening comments, so I think, I think that's all said, so the next one is for Jim.
Littleton Police Chief is a direct report, is a direct report of the Board of Selectment and the board's day-to-day functions are administered through the town administrator and assistant town administrator. What do you see as the most functional and appropriate relationship for the Littleton Police Chief and these two connected but distinct entities?
Well, obviously, I know under the town, you know, the town charter and anything like that, the police and fire department report directly to the Board of Selectment. For lack of a better term, even though you five are the elected members, both the town administrator and the assistant town administrator are your, are your representatives. So therefore, I believe, and the way we handle it, the way I would, I would want to continue handling anything we do, is obviously it goes to the town administrator, the assistant town administrator. I believe by doing that, number one, it takes, it lets us work out issues before it gets to the board, for lack of a better term. It lets us, if, you know, if, if I run something by Mr. Bergman or Ms. Holston and they're like laughing at me and tell me, you know, you don't want to bring that up to the board, then, you know, that's a smart thing and I don't, you know, and I use them as a sounding board and I believe that, you know, they know what, you know, what the board wants. So I believe that, you know, everything goes through the town administrator, he's your funnel, you know, they are your funnel. They, they approve things in their own manner before it gets, gets to you and I would want their approval on the things I grew forward or at least, you know, they're, they're looking at it and say, okay, that's something that, you know, they should make a, you know, take a vote on and make a decision on, you know, and so I guess for lack of a better way, the best way to handle it is the way we've been handling it. Everything goes through the, you know, your, your representatives and then it goes, you know, and then I'm, then I'm here.
Just a follow-up to that, if there is a need to bypass or to come directly to the board, how are you going to handle something like that, you know?
Very delicately, no. Well, first off, I'd be, I'd be very upfront with, with Mr. Bergman if I felt, you know, that I ever, you know, and I really, you know, I can't imagine that happening, but I'd be very upfront with him and tell him exactly what I was going to do and why I was going to do it, but I, I just, you know, I can't imagine, you know, what, what that circumstance, you know, what that circumstance would be to be quite honest with you. You know, I, I think, you know, we have a great professional working relationship in this community with the board and with the, with the, you know, the town administrator and assistant town administrator, so I would find that very difficult to be quite honest to do professionally. I mean, I, I don't know what it would be, I guess Keith would have to murder somebody or something, I had to talk to you guys on that.
Well, no, it could happen. I mean, chief has, I mean, Keith has a lot of experience and you have a lot of police experience. I could imagine if it were a police issue that you wanted to bring up, so.
I, you know, but you're absolutely right, but I believe that, you know, my first, I would see it somewhat as a failure if I couldn't convince Mr. Bergman to allow me to get to the board, to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have. Chief, deputy, you've actually answered the second part of my question, Mr. Kaz, but for the people in the audience and people listening at home, you're, the position of the police chief is considered a strong chief, but how does that differ from the, what's called the strong chief in the fire department?
Strong chief of the fire department is, is the actual appointing authority over in the fire department. He can, I believe, hire fire and appoint. The police chief makes recommendations to the board, the board is still the appointing authority for all police officers and the police chief can, the strong police chief can make policy that's submitted to the board and the board has a 30-day review of those policies to either reject them, modify them or, you know, work with the chief on, you know, the changes they need in that policy. You know, so those are really the two, the two major, you know, major difference obviously is the, is the board is still the appointing authority. That's, you know, that's the major part of it. The strong chief on both sides, the, you know, is the head of the department, they can control schedules, they can, you know, they control their department. You appoint and you approve, you know, approve or disapprove or modify, you know, policy that's propagated by the chief.
All right. Littleton Police Department has been involved in a process to attain state accreditation, and I know all about that stuff too, for the last couple of years. Can you tell us what the program is, how it benefits the department and town and what is your part or has been your part with this process?
Currently, I'm the accreditation manager. I've had some assistance from Detective or Sergeant Patterson and Sergeant Matt Panard in this, in this endeavor. Basically, what it is, is we're rewriting the entire policy book for the town of Littleton and the policies are developed in conjunction with a set of standards, a set of national standards, never mind just statewide standards, so that, you know, and that's not to say that our policy is going to look exactly like Boston PD's policy. However, there are certain parts of that policy that will be the same in everyone and let's just say, you know, a person who's placed under arrest will be handcuffed behind their back, the cuffs will be double locked, you know, you know, things like that. There's certain standards that you have to meet and depending on what the policy is, whether it be hiring, whether it be firearms, whether it be use of force, whether it be, you know, you name every policy. And what it does is it, not only is it, it's good for the department, obviously, our policies we currently have are, are, are good, but these are better, to be quite honest with you. It gives both the officer and the town, I think, a better defensible position because you also have a policy that complies with a nationwide standard that every other, you know, that every other department should attain or should want to attain to, you know, to, to run your department through that. And that's, you know, that's cash handling, that's every, every gamut of what we do. There's some sort of a directive or a policy that we would be, you know, utilizing and when we match up to those standards, you know, it shows that, you know, you're doing what's recognized so that when a problem does occur, and let's face it, we're, we're in the type of work where there are going to be problems at some time or another and that standard, that policy, you know, goes to court for some reason. It shows that this isn't some policy that somebody just pulled out of their pocket. It's based on Kalia, you know, Kalia standards, which is the, the law enforcement standards, the nationwide standards, the Massachusetts has adopted and that it's a norm out in the police service. And that, you know, I mean, there's no guarantees in any civil court, obviously, or any court. However, obviously, it, you know, and it, and it's the best practice for our, you know, for our, you know, for our enforcement.
So, as a follow-up, where are you in the process as far as getting the accreditation and who actually does the accreditation?
The Massachusetts State Accreditation Commission comes out. They actually come out and it's a three-day process and they go through our entire policies, they go through all our documentation on the policies and they go through and make sure that you are actually doing what you're saying you're going to do, that you have the, the, you know, the backup that shows what's going on. They do, you know, they do a full inspection of the department, they do, you know, and that's the, the building itself and the equipment and everything else in there, they go through the whole process. Right now, we're, we're in the first phase, which is a certification. We're right on that brink now, we're, we're issuing all the new policies that you reviewed over the last couple of years, where, you know, many of those have been issued and then you, this board has done several others this year, we're in the process of getting all those policies out. Once the, all these policies are out, we'll, we'll put in for our mock assessment, which is a team comes out and just takes a, a look at us and make sure, okay, you know, you're ready and then we'll go in for the assessment. So, I'm hoping to, you know, I don't know, we probably won't make May, but I imagine we'll make September's cycle and we're, we're in good shape. But that's not to say we're going to kind of be in that catch 22, they, they only meet certain times of the year. We won't make May, we will make September, but we're still progressing forward even though we're going to be at our certification stage probably in May. So we'll still keep progressing forward to go for full accreditation, you know, which is more policies and, you know, and, and other things that we haven't done yet. So, over that next, it's not like it's going to stop over June, July and August and wait till September. We're still also progressing forward to get to full accreditation.
All right, thank you. Okay. Alex, you're up next.
Looking, this should say in here, looking a bit ahead, where do you feel that combined, shared or regional services will play a role?
Well, we looked at, as you know, this year, we looked at combining the control centers and, you know, I'm not a believer in, I'm not a believer in combining something just to combine it. You have to, there has to be a good, a good reason behind that. If you're looking just to combine something just to, to save, to save money, if it's not giving you a better product or a better, you know, more safety for the community, you know, to me, it doesn't make any sense. And also too, if it's going to not give you a better product and cost you three times the amount, then, you know, as a, as a, you know, as a chief, I have to look at, you know, at that also and say, okay, that doesn't make any sense for the town of Littleton. You know, I've watched the Devens Regional Control Center go online, I've talked to several of the different departments, you know, like any new place, there's bugs to be worked out, there's the good, there's good and bad. Something that, you know, several of the towns found, which was one of the reasons we were looking at if we did a regional, trying to do it in Littleton, was because of course, you know, we have a, a police station that, you know, we aren't staffed with police officers inside the building 24 hours, seven days a week, you know, it's our, it's our communications people that are in there. And if all of a sudden we stripped our communications division and sent it over to Devens, do we lock our front door? You know, and that's what's happened in both in Harvard and in Lunenburg, they both hired different, you know, different levels of staffing to keep their, their front door open, for lack of a better term. However, with that said, you know, if, if and when, you know, the right entity, you know, we, we were trying to combine up with Boxborough to do a regional dispatch, I believe it would have been a great fix. I do believe it's certainly something you always have to look at. I believe that anything that comes across, you know, public safety in general, whether about regionalization, is something you have to look at and evaluate and see whether it's, it's good or bad for your community. You know, regional, you know, and I know I'm talking mainly about regional dispatch right now because that's kind of the newest thing for Massachusetts right now. Obviously, down south and even our western Mass, it's been done much more than it has been around here. However, you know, seeing, you know, I've worked in Littleton for 32 years, the control center is the only 24/7 point of contact that Littleton has. It becomes the lifeline for the light department, the highway department, you know, never mind the police and fire, you know, medical services on a, on a daily basis. And, you know, I don't know right now, you know, if we can, if, you know, I believe that Chief Wazinski and I would still, and the deputy chief in the fire department would still would like to pursue some sort of a regional system within Littleton if possible because, you know, I believe at some point, having two people on that desk at all times is going to be key or, and/or necessary. We haven't reached that point with just ourselves yet, but there are times, as you, as you well know, that, you know, that desk can get overwhelming very quickly and it is, it is the lifeline for, for everything.
Thank you.
My last question. Of all responsibilities the chief would have and have to balance and go over, what do you think the most important one is?
Most important responsibility of chief?
Yeah.
In my opinion, keeping the men and women of my department as safe as humanly possible. That's my number one job, is to keep the men and women that work for me, give them the equipment they need and give, and keep them as safe as I possibly can. And that's by providing them with the best of equipment and the best direction. Now, with that said, overall, that's just one singular part. It's also providing for this community the best police department possible that I believe, you know, that I've been involved there for 32 years into, to continue that, to offer it the leadership it needs, to, you know, continue to mentor members and men and women of the department, you know, both on the patrol side, the communication side and to, you know, continue that, you know, this department forward.
Thank you.
All right, we're getting close to the end here, so we'll get some routine questions. What are the qualities necessary for the police chief and which of these qualities do you feel you possess?
Oh, I believe the police chief has to be honest and I believe he has to be, be open and be forthright. I believe he has to not be afraid to come to this board and maybe tell you something that you don't want to hear or that, you know, or give you the good news as well as the bad news. That's, you know, that's part of my job. You know, I believe, you know, and I believe quite honestly that I, I possess, you know, all of that. I believe that I can, you know, I believe people can come to me, I believe, you know, that you have to be a listener, you have to listen before you speak. I also believe, you know, and not to sound, learn to quote someone like Thomas Edison said, you know, it's not always about finding out, you know, who's at fault. It may be it's more important to find out what the solution is to that problem and making sure it doesn't happen again, you know, and then dealing with, you know, what may be the, the root core and moving forward. And I believe I possess all of those, that I believe I'm a thinker, I believe I'm a leader and, you know, you know, you know, I want to continue on in this community.
Okay. There you go. Is there anything else? We have one final one here, is there anything else anyone thought of in the meantime or wants to add on or follow up or anything? The only, the final question then, is there, is there any question that we did not ask that you'd like to answer or is there any final, this will take this as your closing statement to, to say whatever you like?
Well, it's been my, I guess it's been my privilege to serve this community for the last 32 years and, you know, I, I see myself serving this community into the future. I want to continue to bring this department forward. I want to continue to do the great work that the men and women of this department do. You know, they're the core of this department, I am not. I know, whether, you know, I want to be there to help lead, help bend or, but the core of this department, you know, is the men and women- of this department, you know, is the men and women that work in the patrol and, you know, communications sections, or I should say, in the, you know, department as a whole in the communications section. I want to, I want to be there to help lead that forward. I want to continue to, you know, grow with Littleton as it grows. You know, there's going to be challenges with new things opening. There's going to be, you know, challenges with, you know, protecting our seniors, protecting our youth, you know, in this ever-changing world of electronics and, you know, these new devices and new things coming online, policing is changing. Policing isn't just like it used to be where, you know, you know, back when I started, there was no cell phones, there was no nothing. A call came in, you got it on the radio, you went to the house, you dealt with it. Doesn't work that way anymore. You know, now there's, you know, whether it be, you know, the follow-up with, with mental health professionals, whether it be with the Department of Children and Families and Services, whether it be elder services, whether it be elder services in our community, whether it be park and rec, whether, you know, I just can go on and on. And I want to continue the department's good work in all those areas. And I just want to, I just want to continue to move us forward. And I, you know, I think we've got a great base. I think we, you know, but you can always strive to be better. And that's what I want to do. I want to, I want to, you know, and that's going to be a hard, a hard thing to attain because I believe, I fully believe, we are one of the best police departments, you know, never mind in Massachusetts in the country. And, you know, and that-
Please, 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 make it up, please, sir. Let Deputy finish.
That, you know, and, you know, some of that exposure comes from the fact that I went down south and studied out at Louisville, and was exposed to many different departments and many different, you know, issues. And I just, you know, I can't say enough about this community. I can't say enough about what Littleton has done for me in my 32 years here. You know, I came here as a stranger, and they embraced me in one of their own. And now some of them kicked me out, but for the most part, they continue to embrace me. But, you know, I, you know, this community is a great community, and I just want to continue to serve it.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. I think that concludes. If anyone has anything else, we can call this interview process, we can call it to a conclusion.
Did you hear the process?
Yes, interview process, okay. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The next item would be to move to a, to item five. Alex, I know you said something, so I don't want to miss that, I don't want to skip you. So are you ready to speak now, or what's your thought?
This is where it gets a little complex. In my earlier disclosure, I said I was going to participate in the discussion, interview with the deputy chief, and subsequently, a discussion of the vote that will take regards to appointing the deputy chief as chief. However, there's an item beforehand that we have to deal with, where I am going to recuse myself from the item, and I have a disclosure here that says that. And again, it's lengthy, I'm not going to read the whole thing. But it is to do with a dispute with, in particular, the police chief on an incident that happened at my home. And the police chief investigated, took over the investigation of the matter, so on, so forth. I'm not going to get into the details. But the fact of the matter is, I don't think it's wise for me to participate in the discussion of the contract part of that. So I would like to proceed to the back of the room and let you handle that part, and then Mr. Chair would like to come up and participate in the other vote.
Well, there's another option. These two motions, do we need to do them in this order? Can we go in the other order?
Do, that, the, you've got, on the matter of appointment of the chief of police, there are two separate matters which are in a combined motion. One is that since we have the incumbent's date of retirement is September 2nd, the matter comes of appointing a new permanent police chief effective September 3rd. So that's part of the action that you would take tonight. The second part would be that for the period of the incumbent police chief's terminal leave, that the board would also want to appoint an acting chief of police up to bridge us between the beginning of the current chief's terminal leave and his retirement. The matter which Alex will be recusing on is the agreement that we've reached with the incumbent on what the date of the terminal leave is to commence. So that's the matter that, so you do that first, then you establish what the start date is for an acting chief of police. Then the next step is you appoint an acting chief of police. So that's why we do it in this order.
Well, before we have a vote, I'd like to have a discussion. Can we have a discussion on the-
Discussion.
What's that?
On the number one?
Oh, number one or number two? Well, number two. I mean, we just had an interview. I think we need to just discuss for a few more minutes what we learned during the interview. And I think that should come, I mean-
Item one, I do not want to-
Okay, so let's talk about, we can talk about item two. I mean, we need to make sure we're moving forward, or which way we're going, following the interview process before we-
So we're having a discussion after-
So I'd like to discuss the, what we learned from the interview, or where people are following this interview. That's all?
That's great.
So-
With respect-
To the deputy chief.
Okay.
So-
The only thing you're holding in advance is frankly, the start date of the act.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. So-
I also have some perplexities there, Mr. Chair.
Well, I just feel like, we don't know, we don't know what we're doing. We haven't made any thoughts on what we're actually doing for the deputy chief. So, well, I usually start this way. If we can start this way, I like to, you know, I like to maintain order. So Alex, if you have any thoughts on the, what your thoughts are on the deputy chief's interview, or-
Well, I would like to reflect a few thoughts to the board about that. And I think my thoughts will reflect the consistency of my beliefs as we move through the process. The process is what it is. The board has decided in majority what the process is, is. But I want to be on record as being opposed to the process. And I don't want it to be perceived as anything against Matt King. I've known Matt King for a long time. Former Chief O'Day once said to me that Matt was one of the best road sergeants he'd ever seen. I agree. I've worked with Matt many times and have no cause to doubt his abilities to be chief. Matt works with his constituents, not around them or through them. If I were the owner of a security company in a private sector, I would be pleased to have Matt on board. But we are not a private company, we are a public sector. And I believe that due diligence should have prevailed through a standard hiring process that we should have followed. The end result may well have been the same. Matter of fact, I'm pretty confident it might have. But when we hear statements about, when people ask why they want to do this, we hear things like, "The department runs fine. Now why go through the extra effort? Why do we have to look around if we have the right guy there? He's done a good job." And that's all true. But what I think we haven't done is been transparent enough. I think what we haven't done is followed the practices that this town has followed for every hiring practice. We adopted something new, brand new, never tried, and I hope we don't try it again. And I think we failed to recognize professional hiring standards that are universally used in the public sector. We don't know what the market looks like. We don't know whether, we know that we'll be looking at a salary consideration. He may well deserve more than that salary consideration. We don't have a snapshot of where we are in the world around this. And we heard from him tonight, very good rendition of standards and stuff like that with respect to accreditation and that sort of thing. But I think what we missed was we should have had a committee, we should have had citizens at large, and we should have received public input, and we should have reflected viewpoints outside of our own sphere. And that's what I want to be on record as my thoughts on the process. I fully understand, we've been there, we've done that. But I want to make sure that, when I sit here, and this very, you know, this is a very difficult moment for me to undertake, that people understand that I am not against Matt King. I like Matt King a lot. And, but I, I'm against this board and what they chose to do in the process of selecting Matt King.
One thing, just a couple of things you said. You said, you know, "People are saying the department runs fine, so why do we have to go outside? And, you know, we have the right guy right here." I don't know if that was ever an official policy of this board, official position of the board. It may be what people are saying outside here.
I'm just mentioning comments that were said.
Yeah, okay.
I don't expect that that's in our minutes, that that's what our official position-
Right, right, okay. So, given that, that you're on record now, do you have anything, any thoughts on how the interview process went, what your recommendations are, or anything like that? Because that's what I was hoping to get out of this next phase.
I think Matt King did an excellent job in his interview.
All right, I don't want to catch up. Joe, give me a minute.
This process, as far as I'm concerned, started almost two years ago when we decided to go through the whole process of discussing how the next phase might come along. It's not something that just happened in the last couple of months, it's not something that happened in the last week. It's been in the public for two or more years, it's been very transparent, in my opinion. So I don't want to talk about, I mean, I'm trying to, I want to be positive, because I don't want to go back to something about this board. I think this board did the right thing, and I'll go from there. As far as I'm concerned, we've had a 32-years interview, in my opinion. We've had a chance to see this gentleman work in every single process possible. The interview tonight showed it. It's a case where he's been in every single situation that any one could possibly be. The process we went through is also a process that's been used by many communities. If this isn't something that's brand new, or we didn't originate this, and a lot of communities have done the exact same thing. Judging by what I know of the candidate, the years that I've known him, the dealings that I have with him, and I deal with him now quite a bit through the 300th and things before, I am extremely comfortable with having the deputy become our next chief.
Okay? I don't know where you stand, so you enlighten us. Can you tell us where your thoughts are?
Sure, I'd love to, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think as Mr. Knox pointed out, this process started over two years ago when the succession plan was brought forward by Chief Kelly. And this entire board voted unanimously to accept that. And we moved and progressed forward from there. And it's been very open and very transparent, as Joe has said. In regards to Deputy King, you know, why waste any resources of this town? Why, you have, as Joe said, 32 years of an interview right here, sitting in front of us. You couldn't ask for a better, a better cop to run this town. Especially with the guy that's leaving after 32 years also, Chief Kelly, who's done an outstanding and fantastic job, and brought the department to where it is, and brought Matt King to where Matt King is right now. And that's why I can confidently say, not only should Matt King be the next chief, he is 110% ready to be the next chief. And I really appreciate his service to this town. For my 51 years of living in here and having to deal with the PD, oh, since I was 16. But you talk about community policing, you know, some of my fondest memories are with the Littleton PD, and same with my, same with my father, God bless his soul, you know, and for 32 years, Matt's been there and along with Chief Kelly, so he's going to be a great chief. Thank you.
You know, I, people made a comment that this was a done deal, or people suggested that maybe this is a done deal and this was a formality. I didn't think it was at all. I really didn't know what to expect tonight. I haven't dealt with Matt very much since I've been here the 11 years. I have dealt with him the last few years, obviously, and the last few months especially. And I've gotten to know not only the job that he does, but I've, the last few months have been very trying, and I've really learned about his character. And I think that goes a long way to saying that I think he's qualified, he has a personality for Littleton. Regarding the interview itself, I know last time, I think you rated, when we did the fire chief, you were rating people, so I started rating the answers here on, for each question. I had to use A B, A B C process because I didn't know if I, if it was 1, 2, 3, I wouldn't know if I would remember which one was higher. But just to reveal, you know, it's really a lot of As, and I found I was given a lot of As and Bs, so I had to go to the plus and minus system. But, you know, I just think a lot of the questions were answered very well. And they were complete, they were, they answered the question. One of the biggest problems I have watching any type of political commentary is people don't answer the questions. And I really thought Deputy Chief did a fine job answering the questions, and I think they were, they were good answers. And given that, and the, and the few months that I've worked with, and the few years that I've worked out with him, I feel that we're ready to move to a vote here. So if, Alex, if you want to recuse for the first question here-
You have to take item one first.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you want to recuse for item one.
So I'll scoot to the back, and then-
You have that in the record? Okay? So I think based on everything that we've done for the last few years, specifically the last few months, and the last couple of hours, I think we're ready to, for a motion, and we have two motions before us. The first one, if we'd like to-
Before we move on to the motion, I'd like to recognize Chief Kelly for his 32 years of service to this town. As Matthew stated earlier, Chief Kelly has been here, he's grown with this town, we've accepted him as one of us. He's held every position in the department, all the ranks up to and including chief. He's been an outstanding pillar of this community. And Chief, I just want to say thank you very much. You'll be greatly and sorely missed.
Do you need an explanation on this?
Sure, sure.
That being said-
Let's explain what we're doing in this first motion here.
Sure. The first step that we wanted to do was to ensure that we have a smooth transition from the outgoing to the incoming administration of the police department. I had the comment from the chief, from Chief Kelly back in December, that somehow his life, his life changed a little after, after the board made the policy announcement, that we were going, essentially following his advice, we were looking within the department to get the next chief, and that we're going to schedule an interview with Matt King as the sole candidate. And after that, I guess, Chief, the phone stopped ringing, right? That we've all started, we started, we were all calling Matt a little more often, and you would call the chief and say, "Can we speak to Matt?" And that, and in recognition of our, of our long relationship of 30 years, the chief's service here, we wanted to provide for as smooth a transition as we could, and one of the issues that we were coming up with is, when the board actually did vote to make the appointment of the next chief, that we, that it seemed like the most appropriate time to just make the transition, do the, do the change. So we've consummated that in an agreement between the town, which would be through the Board of Selectmen, and Chief Kelly, to provide that, that his terminal leave would commence this Friday, May 2nd, which would clear the way for the deputy chief to be promoted to acting chief at the same time. We discussed, should it be a week or whatever, and frankly, we thought that it ought to be done before we start town meetings, so that we were having the new, the new person in charge. So with great thanks for a career dedicated in law enforcement to this community. It's a long, I've been in five communities in the same period of time, and to spend your, your entire career in one place, and to devote yourself to that one place is really a great accomplishment, not only for the outgoing chief, but the incoming chief as well. And Littleton is well, is well-served by that kind of longevity. But in order to have it be a smooth transition, we do have an agreement which would provide for a terminal leave date to start this Friday, and that's the first step. The next step would then be enacting as of Friday. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
It's a two-way street here. Chief, do you have anything to say, as this may be one of your last, all of us, our last public appearance? What would you like to, what would you like to say?
Congratulations, Chief Kelly. All right, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to execute the mutually agreed agreement of Chief of Police John M. Kelly with terminal leave commencing on May 2nd, 2014.
Second. Motion made in second to execute a mutual agreement with Chief Police John Kelly, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Alex, Ms. Alex Clark, what's your name? I think we've discussed this, I think we've heard the interview, discussed it, I think we're ready to move on, if there's any further discussion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Subsection 97A, to appoint Deputy Police Chief Matthew King as acting chief of police effective May 2nd, 2014, at the grade 14, step 1 rate of $93,542.40, and as police chief effective September 3rd, 2014, subject to negotiation and execution of terms of employment contract under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1080.
Second. And a motion in a second to appoint Deputy Chief, Acting Chief of Police, effective May 2nd, and to appoint him as Chief of Police effective September 3rd, 2014. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You did good.
My dad, Jim King, a veteran of both WWII and the Green War.
Glad to have you here. Thanks. You want to whack him once, put the can...
Congratulations, you've done that more than once. Done a good job, thank you.
His mother did a good job. The only thing he ever wanted to do was be a policeman. Unfortunately, the cop in Dedford, tell me Bob and Grant, come home one night, have a dinner.
You don't need to tell your story.
I think I was arrested. Officer McGuff, cut me and Andy McKenna. I said, "Oh, we were up at the water towers, but we were throwing rocks at him." And Bob and Grant was his mentor, get him on his going, going the weight of your car.
Walter! Walter! What, did I chop me?
Yeah, you was, yeah.
I didn't know you guys were still meeting.
We are. All right, well, there, there we go, I'm going to go.
I thought, I thought everything just happened.
Did I accidentally give you two versions of the other one? How many did you vote? Was it four votes?
I've got these two.
You've got two?
I've got two.
Okay. I've got one floating around here somewhere, I don't know where it is. I've got one of each, right? It's like a third page in...
Alex, you abstain from the vote?
No, no.
Oh. She, I, that's why I wanted to make sure.
It was your unanimous vote.
Yeah, she had you down as abstaining.
That was entirely because of what I think it meant.
That's, uh... Which one is that? You're not signing that.
Nope, I can't sign that.
He recused, no?
I thought we had met.
I just passing things along?
I signed one by accident.
Right choice, right there? Very good. Okay.
This one?
Yep.
Oh, that's one you can't...
Lost a piece of paper somewhere, where the hell did it go?
What? What? The dates, when the transition happened, I just want to double-check on the dates.
Um, May 2nd.
May 2nd is the acting, acting chief.
Acting chief on May 2nd, and permanent, I'll have this, I'll have it, I'll post it, I'll post it to the website right now, because I've already got it.
And this is the, the summer?
Yep. I'll post it now, so you can get it.
Okay. I didn't know what the 14th was, um, 14th, 14th of which month, was 14th, maybe it was 2014, I don't know.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, yeah, May 2nd, 2014.
Okay.
So, I posted, um, let me...
I'll check.
Yeah, it should be there now, if you go, if you go to the blog, I'll, I'll tweet it in just a minute, but, um...
Okay.
So, it's there now, with, um...
Mr. Curry?
With the dates.
Are you good?
Very good, thank you.
See you back.
One face.
One piece, yeah.
Now, do you, do you have a chance to go back?
Yeah, because I'm still in there another, uh, three years, at least on my...
I've got so much business.
I'll be back.
Russia?
Who knows with Russia, but, yeah.
So, you're on, you're on active reserve now?
On active reserve, I'm on a military leave until...
You personally, you have, uh...
No, I have to get off that maximum.
Two years, I think, if I'm not...
Well, actually, I have one year...
I got his elbow fixed.
Sure, the fix, this foot fixed.
Dad, and, uh, that second year, they technically call you for training, to send you one, or third year, so they can't send you for two years, they call you back at the beginning of that second year, for training, not much else, it's one of those things, yeah, you're not going to go for two years, you tell your family that.
It's going to be a while.
But, uh, yeah, but it's good to be home, just go home.
I heard you were home, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Being a lot of people happy.
Yeah.
I know Dad is happy.
My wife's happy.
Your daughter's happy.
Nice to see you, Gina, thank you.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrolman. Okay, we're still in, still in open session.
All right, here we go. You want to hear a motion? Yep.
Mr. Vice, Mr. Vice Chair, okay.
So, that means it's easier.
You ready for a motion, Mr. Chair? Moved that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A, 2, to go into executive session to conduct strategy in preparation for the negotiations with non-union personnel, and not to convene in open session thereafter.
Second. Okay. Salkin Carr?
Aye.
Salkin Knox?
Aye.
Salkin McCurdy?
Aye.
You're now in executive session.
All right.[1429.57]